To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. I have no report this evening, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Do I have a second? All right. Jim, did you want to talk about item C, which is notification of our retirements?
Other than the fact that we will have all of our retirees at the end of the year, as we usually do to celebrate their years of service to Monroe, and then over the, well, right before the break, we would receive two more retirements that are in the packet. So, I'll report on that when we discuss the budget. But, otherwise, you know, we have a fair number of retirements. We'll celebrate them at the end of the year, as we always do, with our plate and all of that. And that's it.
Great. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to the reports of our committee and liaisons, and first up is our Mastic representatives.
This Thursday will be Alumni Day here at Mastic, where students who graduated last year come back and share with mostly juniors and seniors their experiences at college, so that we can get an idea of what college will be like and everything that goes on there and how it's different from high school. And also, on Thursday, the 12th, at 7:00 is the chorus concert. That'll be very nice. They've been practicing a while, and the strings will also be playing with them for the Hallelujah Chorus and a couple of other songs, so that'll be very nice.
As in terms of sports, boys' basketball has a game tonight at Bethel. That's where Will is. And they're, they have a game as well, home Friday, so be sure if you can make it out to that. They need as much support as they can get. Girls' basketball is facing Weston tonight, and that's at home. And boys' swimming is home tonight as well. Also, on Saturday, this is the final report of, we have the Mastic Polar Plunge event held for Mr. Jason Castillo, for his wife, who has a late-stage colon cancer. We've been raising money. If you can go to GoFundMe.com, we now have a page. Just type in Darlene Castillo, and it should come up. You'll see their faces and their little child and just, it's a good cause, and we know that since it's, Mastic's such a great community, that people have already helped out, and you can check. I think it's over 1,700 already. And so, yeah, we'll be jumping into South, the Southport Beach on Saturday at around 9:15, and it's gonna be fun, so.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any reports this evening? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. All right, hearing none, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Before I talk about next year's budget, I want to talk about a few things with this year's budget, just to keep you in the loop and make you aware. First of all, today officially at 4:00, we put a freeze on our budget spending. Only emergency items will be approved. Everything has to come through me now in order to get approval. We're doing that because of the expected overruns in special education, and we anticipate, well, we don't anticipate, we know for sure now that the town of Monroe is gonna receive about $134,000 less in ECS grant money. Represents about a 2.1% reduction in our ECS money. We were fairly lucky at that, I think. I've seen some districts where as much as 34%, 50%, 60% of their ECS money was lost. That is a this-year problem, okay? So, we're going to, you know, have to watch with the town, see how that impact plays out. And I would assume that that's the starting point for next year's ECS grant money is, would be my assumption with that. Now, once again, the state is reneging yet again on what they should be spending on school districts, and taxpayers are gonna be left to pick up that piece. So, I think, I find that to be very unfortunate. I know that there is a conference call that I'll be participating in on Thursday morning with superintendents across the state to see how people are going to be handling this. One of the things that jumps out at me when I look down the list of reductions is that it looks like the urban centers experienced a flat rate, $250,000 reduction. If you look at the city of Bridgeport, for instance, that represents 1/10 of 1% of their ECS funding, okay? And we're at 2.1. So, again, I think the suburban districts are being asked to pick up more and more of the share across the state in that regard, okay? All right, next year's budget, when we last talked formally here, we were at a 3.47% increase, or a $1.896 million increase over last year's budget. Since that time, we did pick up two more retirements, okay? And so, we're going to factor that in. I'm gonna make a couple of comments here. We have a third-grade teacher retirement that'll save us about $23,600. A music teacher retirement, that's in your packet, for $12,471. A library-media center specialist retirement, a savings of $19,233. We found a situation in our special education. It's for this year, and so it's also gonna be for next year, and that was, we have an outplacement that's coming back to district, so we can experience a $70,000 savings in that line item. We are gonna not replace one special education teacher who retired. I don't know specifically where in the district that position will fall. I'm gonna have to do a thorough review of our deployment of all special education teachers in the district, but we will not backfill one of those positions, so we can save $57,142 on that position. We're anticipating some salary savings. When we go through the salary account with a fine-tooth comb, we look at experiences like long-term leaves, maternity leaves, those kinds of things. I think we're safe, we can be safe here in pulling about $73,500 from the salary account, and we'll keep our fingers crossed that that plays out well, okay? And then, to round things off, we're going to just scavenge every other account for small amounts of money to the tune of about $29,500, which would bring our increase over last year down to a 2.95% increase, okay? Or $1,610,546 over last year's budget. Now, in the process, you know, we will continue, once the board adopts a budget tonight, hopefully, we will continue with the same efforts to scrutinize every possible savings as we go along. I'm not very optimistic that we'll be finding that many, but we'll do our due diligence every day in looking for potential savings that we can have. And as time goes on, if those savings can be realized, we'll bring them forward to the board as we go, okay? So, my recommendation would be for the Board of Education to adopt a budget for the board for next year of a 2.95% increase, or a $1,610,546 increase over last year's spending, for a grand total of $56,252,314. Any questions on that? Yeah?
The only question I have is, do we have any reason to think there may be more retirements for the year, or this is pretty much what we're looking at?
Well, you know, the possible, the chance for retirements is probably pretty slim, only in the fact that by contract, in order to qualify for the retirement incentive that's in place for this year, for certain teachers, it's not all teachers are eligible for, because this was a sunsetted clause in the contract. If somebody were to come forward, they had to notify us by December 31st in order to qualify for this. Now, you know, if somebody were to come, then the question would be, would we offer the incentive if they were interested in retiring, so we could experience more savings? I'd have to probably come back and talk to you folks about whether or not we would offer that, extend that. We have in the past, when we were in desperate need to save money. You know, the other fact, the other thing that comes into play is, it's not just retirements, it's people leaving for other reasons. And sometimes, you could pick up some savings there. If a high-end teacher with a lot of experience were to be relocated, you know, their spouse is relocated to another job out of state, or to a place that's not commutable, we could experience some savings there. And so, typically, John, what would you say? I mean, at this time of year, we always pick up about two, or three, or four people that will leave for some, one reason or another, and sometimes, we can experience some savings. Sometimes, it could cost us money, too. So, if it, you know, if it falls that a very inexperienced person in a shortage area leaves, and you're faced with trying to find a physics teacher, or a Spanish, or a French teacher, you may end up with a seasoned person and actually spend more. But, you know, we're gonna do our best to keep our hiring in line with what we need to do.
Now, one thing that we had talked about earlier, I think I mentioned at the legislative breakfast, that the legislators had asked for a top-five list of unfunded mandates, so that with the state pushing back on their obligation to the towns, on what mandates could they fight back with to say, okay, well, if you're reducing this one $134,000, this one, you know, $800,000, you gotta give on some of these unfunded mandates. So, a follow-up to that, JP emailed Jim and I both last week, asking for a list of which are the ones with regard to us, but also, they're the same ones that every town experiences with unfunded mandates and possibly being able to push those off. I'm not sure if they'll get anywhere with that in Hartford, you know, and if there is some savings from that, where they, you know, say, okay, on one of them, okay, you don't have to do that. Those savings, unfortunately, we probably would not know until the end of the legislative session, so it's not even like it would help us. All it would be like, all that would happen is, if the state decides during this legislative session to cut funding for next year's budget, it would probably just go to offset in some small way that mandate would go to offset whatever reduction we have. Now, clearly, none of those mandates are going to amount if the state does a much larger cut than what they have here. We will still be on the hook for a reduction, and we have no idea which direction they're going to. And I think the word is, not until June, would we know what direction.
I mean, one of these mandates is that the, if I could share, I got back to both Donna and JP on this last weekend, again, in a little bit more detail this morning, but one perfect, let me give you two perfect examples of unfunded mandates. If you take the, the first one would be professional development mandates placed on a school system. Right now, there are probably, I think, it's somewhere in the vicinity of 36 different mandates of training that we have to do for teachers, paraprofessionals, and other people in the district. One of them is a new one, just where we had implemented end of last year, beginning of this year, was physical management training. Every person in the district, all the teachers, all the paraprofessionals, some of the unaffiliateds, all of the administrators, had to be trained in this. It's a six-hour training, okay? And a typical professional development day with lunch and the training is a six-hour training. That's what you get out of the day. And so, if you calculated it all out, what it cost us over the course of the year is we lost one full day of our professional development opportunities for training teachers in our initiatives, okay? That 20%, you pay $113,000 a day in labor wages for that training, okay? So, that's a, that has a real value to us, and not everybody in the district needs to, in my estimation, be trained in physical management training. But now, if you couple that with the idea that, you know, every year, we have to train in blood-borne pathogens, we have to certify in CPR, we have to do, you know, all of these things, and like I said, there's about 36 of them, it comes down to, you know, the state controlling those five days of professional development. We don't have the time now, sometimes, to get, you know, our math program fully done, or the, you know, some of the things that we might be doing with Teachers College and Readers and Writers Workshop, or some other activities. And so, that's one place where that happens. John, what was another one on there?
Alternative education.
Oh, that's the, that's the one, yeah. The alternative education one, this one is just fascinating. I don't understand where this is coming from, but, starting next year, if a school district expels a student, up until that time, in Monroe, in any district I've ever been employed in, the typical alternative education that you provide an expelled student is two hours of tutoring per day, five days per week. Typically, that's about $55 an hour, and so you could do the math, depending on when a child is expelled. Under this new legislation, the alternative education has to be the equivalent of the current alternative education program that you have, okay? Which is $900, the minimum of 900 hours. So, the cost of that, we calculated it today, was $49,000 now, if a child is out for a whole year. Now, typically, you know, again, we're fortunate here in Monroe, we don't have a lot of expelled students, but in my time here, we've had from zero expelled students to three expelled students. So, you could see, you could be out $150,000 in providing this alternative education in a heartbeat, in order to meet this new mandate. Nobody at the state level thought of what that impact was going to cost. Now, I mean, like I say, in some towns, you know, you may be, you may be 10 or 12 times that amount, if not more, in terms of the number of expelled students that you may have. So, it's these kinds of things that we, the state cannot continue to cut funding and have the expectation that every little mandate that they issue is gonna be complied with. It's just, we're running out of time and money to do all the things that they're asking us to do.
It's unsustainable.
It's unsustainable, right.
And unrealistic. And maybe, you said, nobody thought about that when they increased those hours for the expelled students. Maybe that's why they're in the financial position they're in right now. They're gonna need to think about it.
Yeah.
Is there any effort to stop these unfunded mandates?
Yeah, there, I mean, there's a couple, there's a couple, there's some, some of these are picking up some steam. They've been on the plate for a number of years. Burden of proof is one of them. Alan, I think we talked a little bit about the burden of proof before. We feel that in Monroe, the cost of burden of proof to us so far this year has been about $196,000, okay? In Fairfield County, that's a relatively modest amount. There's other towns in Fairfield County that are spending way more than that. But there is definitely a head of steam at play right now with legislators to really bring that discussion to a head this year, and see if we can revert to, the burden of proof is on the petitioner, okay?
Didn't every other state get rid of that?
There's five states, there's five states that have the burden of proof rest with the Board of Education. The other 45 states, it goes with the parents, or the petitioner, I should say, not necessarily the parents.
And even regional calendar.
Right.
That's another one.
Regional calendar is another one. I mean, it's a small thing, like I say, but, a relatively small thing, but when regional calendar came into play, everybody wanted to go to school on Columbus Day and Veterans Day. Nobody took the time to ask districts, do you have contractual obligations, that you have employees that are guaranteed those days off? Well, we did. We had several of our unions that had those days guaranteed off. And so, when we were in the negotiation process, to get those days to be workdays cost us money. And, one of the things that we ended up settling was to give them floating holidays, two floating holidays to compensate those two workdays. Well, Gabby, what was the total amount on that? $33,000, I think?
$68,000.
$68,000 that the regional calendar costs you right off the bat. So, again, just another example of, you know, somebody's sitting in Hartford, they pass a law, they don't really know what's downstream of that law in terms of the actual implementation, and then, and then we get it, again, it whittles away at our ability to do all the things that we need to do.
And speaking to the legislators, they have shared with us, a lot of the times, they get this sheet with whatever the bill is, that says, you know, what is the financial implication, and it'll say zero. Well, that's the financial implication to the state, not to the town. So, they look at these things, and, you know, they were honest and said, you know, they looked at regional calendar, and it said zero, you know, zero impact to the state, you know, and said, wow, this kind of sounds like a good thing. Yeah, we should have, you know, you know, schools, you know, on the same regional calendar that they have sort of the same calendar. That sounds good. And then, they vote for it, not really understanding what that means to the different districts. They say, wow, that seems pretty reasonable, that seems good, zero, you know, zero financial impact to, you know, on this, let's go for it.
Why don't they just pass legislation that says you have to show what the impact is on the town?
Again, I think, I think that they, I, my guess is, and again, this is far out of my realm, this is just feedback that they gave, give us at these different legislative breakfasts, breakfasts that we attend. I think it's the office of whatever accounting and policy up there that does all that, and they probably don't even think about taking that into consideration. And Carlos, you probably work a little up there, right?
Well, I, we work closely with some of those offices, Office of Policy Management. What ends up happening is that they're very much, they're like, across the board, everybody gets the same cut. What ends up happening, though, urban districts, because their funding is such a greater number than ours, we, of course, the percentage for us is greater. The other thing is that there's, there needs to be a change in a perception that exists that Fairfield County can sustain itself. That's one of the things that the state capital, that exists among a lot of representatives in the Senate, folks that represent us, that are, or that represent, that are in our state, that think Fairfield County, southwestern Connecticut, can sustain itself, you know, because of the wealth that exists in this county. That's one thing that I think is the most frustrating amongst the, because just informally, that's what you hear. Ah, they'll be fine. Greenwich, who's gonna be suffering a great number, they'll be fine. That's sometimes the attitude. And that has to change, because I think overall, I think, because there are definitely towns and cities that are getting hit really hard with this, and I'm on the side of, they have to really look at who it's really affecting. They're not really, it's kind of a blanket approach at times, so.
If you look at Fairfield, for instance, their typical ECS grant was $1.6 million. They got cut $570,000. So, how do you, how do you come up with that?
Fairfield got hit, and Fairfield's getting hit on both ends. Fairfield's getting hit on both, it's because of GE, and now the, so, and on the Board of Ed side. So, that is probably, in our county, the one that's gonna be getting hit the most, financially speaking, fiscal.
And Greenwich, Greenwich got hit. I mean, they're a wealthy town, granted, but a million three.
Yeah, yeah.
So, they're only left with $136,000 in ECS grant money.
Even Shelton proportionally.
Shelton as well, yes.
Getting pretty, pretty hard.
Shelton had a high percentage as well, yeah. It's not, I don't, I don't know how closely.
4.5%, yeah.
I'm not sure how close, and maybe we can be in further contact with CAE, but I don't know, in regards to advocacy work, this session, on what we can do, as a board, as rep here, as a rep that I, where I sit with Evan, and also with CAE, I don't know what ways we can, I have ideas of how we can go about, but I think we just need to do some serious advocacy work. Not enough, here's the other issue, not enough people from this county go up to Hartford and advocate. You got the ones that are surrounding Greater Hartford that do. But from up here, nobody sometimes wants to take the time to, and we need to really, somebody sent petition, somebody, you know, really put some time and effort into this, into going up there and doing some educating. See how far it gets us, I don't know, but.
You know, the other, the other one that's kind of sticking in our craw right now, and I know I've talked to you about this one before, it's the tuition to the inter-district magnet schools that was authorized, if they could start charging tuition. We were anticipating that that would hit us by about $30,000 in next year's budget. It could be as high as $90,000, depending. Now, Gabby's group, the CASBO, the business officials of Connecticut are fighting, and so is a superintendent's group, too, from, what is it, Stratford.
Right. Stratford, Trumbull, Fairfield.
So, we're all trying to see if we can appeal that, but, you know, my logic in that is, we, state tax dollars built those schools originally, and funds those schools, and now, they're gonna turn around and hit the taxpayers again to send kids there. I mean, it just makes no sense to me. It makes no sense to me. Very frustrating.
Jerry?
A question on the home front. Jim, I know I asked a question earlier, and I don't know if you had a chance to find out the answer, and that was the question about charging Medicaid for OT and PT for certain special ed?
I did ask the question, Jerry, and I cannot remember.
That's, that's okay. I'm just trying to, I'm looking through this, trying in my own way, rationalize where and how. Okay, it's fine.
That's a, that's a K question. Do you know the answer, Cap?
We've looked at that in the past, because it's come up every few years, and the amount of, if I recall, and I'm paraphrasing, so please don't take that kind of, the amount of money we would receive back from Medicaid for the services is very small, proportionally to the services that we end up providing.
Yes.
So, the cost benefit and the amount of work that we would have to do on the backend to get it done.
That makes sense.
You know, larger districts, yeah, it makes a lot of sense. Places like Bridgeport, you know, those towns, they actually have a person strictly dedicated to doing that, because the amount of money that they potentially receive back, we just, we don't have the, I hate to use the word volume, but we don't really have the volume for it.
No, that's, yeah, okay, thank you.
Extremely time-consuming.
Jim, just a quick question to digress to the PD, well, the mandated PD, has Monroe ever had early dismissal days, or would consider early dismissal days for PD, for instruction?
John and I are smiling at each other, because this is a running argument that he and I have all the time. Because of the need, because we feel that pinch and that need to have more professional development time, John is a big proponent, and I've been a stick in the mud in saying no, okay?
Sorry.
So, now, our little argument that's been going on for about five years now, is finally in the public eye, but, you know, instructional time, to me, is so, so valuable. We've designated five professional development days, as it is, throughout the course of the year, and to give up half-days and the inconvenience that that causes, parents and, you know, caregivers to cover their children now on half-days, and when you take in the half-days for exams at the high school, and you take in half-days for parent conferences, I just see the half-days as being, you know, just a further erosion of instructional time.
I totally agree with what you're saying. I mean, instruction time is precious time. I was just throwing it out there as a, you know, if the required PD mandates become, get to a point where the impact, you know, being able to provide teachers with.
What they do, yeah.
the, the tools to provide quality instruction, then, then that, then instruction gets impacted as well. But, I mean, just, just to put it out there.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a running dialogue. We, we really do struggle with it because it is a balancing act. And, um, you know, we, we had not really, we've been able to work around most of the PD mandates that we've had. This PMT training is really the one that's kind of tipped us over the edge. It really has stolen a lot of our time.
We do have every Tuesday afternoon for every, well, each elementary, middle and high have a different day of the week where a teacher stay after school. And so we've been using a lot of that time to do some of our mandated training.
What, what is the norm in Fairfield County? Are, are we the norm as far as the professional development days? I mean, I.
I'd say we're pretty typical.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty typical. Four, five, six, somewhere in that range.
I mean, I, I know, Jim, up, up in the Hartford way, I forget what they call it, but you're right. Once a month, they have a half a day and that's just for the t- but I do understand where you're coming from. That's a lot of time away.
It's time away and typically the, the time is set at the end of the day. So, you know, I know when I was a teacher, if we had a half day, I felt like I worked harder in that half day because you're trying to cram a full day into a half day with kids. And then you have lunch, then you go to PD, you know, my mind may not be fully engaged in that activity. I, I don't know. Call, call me old fashioned.
No, I agree.
David?
Can I go back to the, um, retirement incentive?
Yeah.
Issue? Um, do you think the numbers are out there that, um, they would take a vote? Or is that a contractual issues? But how do you think that could help to actually put out a letter to the unions and get that going for you?
Well, the, the, it's, it's the teachers' union primarily. We don't, when we have retirements and the other associations, we don't, uh, we don't experience any savings uh, because they're maybe an hourly wage or the range is very small between a, a beginning teacher and, or a beginning person and a seasoned person. So, the retirement incentive only worked for, for the teachers bargaining unit primarily, okay? You know, they're fully aware of that December thirty-one deadline. And, you know, Jeff is in the back of the room, he'll, he'll, I'm sure, sure he'll agree with me that, you know, in the past, when, when it's been the retirement year, we have made exceptions and extended it, uh, to go a couple more days or maybe a month more or something like that. Or if somebody comes along and says, you know, here it is February and my life circumstance has really changed. I would love to, to go, but I, I won't unless I have that. Then, I think then we have the conversation and we make a decision about it.
Case by case basis?
Yeah, yeah.
But at this point, I think it'll be maybe one.
We, we're, we're a young, believe it or not, we're, we're starting to migrate to the younger side, uh, of the experience here in the district. We don't have a lot of, uh, people my age or theirabouts that are, you know, in that zone of where you would retire.
I think you made the comment a while back that when you look at the age wise, and I hate to use that word, but I think that there's just a small amount that are thirty years and more.
Right.
And everyone else is.
Yeah.
Anybody had, had anything else about the budget before we move on? All right, Jim, do you have anything more for your superintendent report?
No.
Great. All right, we will move on to then old business. And first up, we have the curriculum proposals that we, um, discussed last meeting, which was for, um, new, the new, um, anatomy and physiology class and then the AP psychology textbook only. That class is still, um, the same. It's just the textbook that's being changed because there's some changes, um, to the psychology and the way they do psychology. It has something to do with DSM four to DSM something five, right, correct?
That's exactly right.
Yep. See, we pay attention. We have those presentations. So do I have a motion to approve the new course plus the, um, instructional materials for the new course and the AP psychology textbook?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Um, do I have any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving those? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to new business. And first up is going to be the vote on the two thousand seventeen and eighteen, um, budget. Do I have a motion to approve the budget as presented and revised this evening by Jim to a increase of two point nine five percent or a one point six one zero five four six increase?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this two point, two point nine five percent increase? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Uh, next up is, uh, and we've kind of talked about this a little, which is the magnet school tuition. Um, we touched upon that earlier. Do you have anything further you want to discuss about that, Jim?
No, no, just that, uh, you know, we're going to do our best to fight this fight and convince our legislators to, uh, disavow this, really. Um, like I say, we, we anticipated a thirty thousand dollar bill, but it could be as high as ninety-three thousand. So, this is a, a big, potentially a big hit for us.
Jerry?
Hey, Jim, is there any way we can join on with, like, say, a Stratford? I mean.
We are.
Okay.
Stratford has, um, actually not only sent out stuff to superintendents, but also the, um, board chair in Stratford has set up a little group email between Stratford and us and Fairfield and, and Trumbull to have a concerted effort because it, it really, really affects Stratford and Fairfield the most. Um, they have a huge number and exposure. Um, so there, it is a concerted effort by a couple of these towns, um, to try to, um, fight that. So, it's happening on both sides and fronts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And any opportunity you have to reiterate that with JP or with Senator Kelly is well worth it.
Yes. Great. The next, uh, anybody else have anything on that? All right, the next item is setting the date for our Board of Education self-evaluation and also the superintendent evaluation. Those are two different things. Um, and David, just to give you a, a little background, every year, the Board of Education has this little questionnaire that is provided to us by CAE where it's a, a little evaluation that we fill out. We send our, you know, completed information to John and, um, John compiles it all for us and we, and graphs it and we sit and discuss how we think we're doing as a board in the different areas. Running meetings, you know, communication, getting, you know, um, getting along with everybody, you know, running good meetings. So it's like all different areas, interacting with the superintendent. And we evaluate ourselves and we discuss, you know, what we're doing well and where we need improvement on. And we do that annually.
There's, uh, I looked at, into the calendar in that regard. And there are two dates, January seventeenth is awfully short notice. Uh, but March sixth is a date where we don't have a, uh, any policy or finance meetings before.
Okay.
And so if you wanted to meet, say, at six o'clock, um, you know, we could provide dinner and, um, you could do the, your self-evaluation in that timeframe, you know, have the, the questionnaires out for you. Um, and then John took some initiative today and contacted FOI concerning whether or not you could do the self-evaluations in executive session or not. And John, why don't you fill them in on what that looks like?
We talked to Tom Hennig, the man that came here and talked to us a couple of years ago. He said that if the board, um, wants to have an open, frank discussion in executive session, if everyone agrees, if they want an executive session, they can have it in an executive session. You can't have any action taken in an executive session, but usually for evaluations you're doing.
Is, is March sixth for our self-evaluation good at six o'clock here, I would say?
Mm-hmm.
And Joe's off, conference room. Um, good for everybody?
It works.
Okay, so we will get the, um, evaluations, um, out. I think I still have the sheets if.
Well, we, we did it last year on a, a Google Doc, so it.
Did you? Okay.
So I could send them out to everyone again.
John, if you can send that out.
I can send it out now, it's fine?
That's fine. Okay, so then we will meet at six PM on Monday, the sixth, to do that. Um, John will send that Google Doc out. Just fill it out as quickly as possible and get back, that back to him so that he can compile everything and have that ready for us, um, so he can send that out to us prior to our meeting. So, let's say, everybody by the thirty-first of January can have that done. That should give John more than enough time. Right?
What's, I'm sorry, what was the date?
January thirty-first?
Okay, thank you.
Is that good?
Hmm?
All right. So that's good. Next one up is the superintendent's, uh, evaluation. Um, Jimmy.
We could do that in, in an executive session.
Yes.
One of our February meetings.
Correct. I was going to say, do you, I will get that form out to everybody. Do you, you have your stuff to fill out and you're good to go, so February's okay for you?
Yeah.
All right. So I will get that out to everybody once again. It is a form that we fill out. Um, Jim, you know, will come, do his part of what he, you know, he does his own self-evaluation. And then we will meet with Jim as a group and we will complete the formal evalu- uh, evaluation that we have, that we have in the past. It'll be new to you, David, but if you have questions, let me know. But everybody else is familiar with that form that we have completed in the past.
What's this, the February, the second meeting in February?
That would be the, that would be the twentieth. Well, that's President's Day. Sorry, so it's the twenty-first of the meeting. Is that good for you then?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will do, that is done at a board meeting. We'll go into executive session. So, um, I will get that out by tomorrow to everybody. Again, you don't need to formally fill out the form, just jot down notes. It, it, it's a scale of one to four, you know, one being the worst, four being the best. So you kind of jot down what, you know, your number is and you can jot down whatever little notes. But I'll compile the whole evaluation, you know, type it all up and after we meet with, after the twentieth and, and then finalize it. All right, does anybody have questions on that? And that's good with everybody?
The twentieth would be when we met with Jim?
No, we're meeting the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
So, so we'll meet with Jim on the twenty-first. Jim will probably leave after his portion is done. We will com- and we do, can finish the evaluations. I'll type it up, talk to Jim, let him know if there's anything vastly different. Tell him what our, as we normally do, what our priorities are moving forward, um, for him to look at and that we would like. And then we just, we'll type it up and sign off on it and it'll be all done. That would be the twenty-first. Great. All right, anything else on those two things? All right, hearing none, we will move on to policies first review. And we have two policies under first review, which is fifty-one thirty-one dot eighty-one, students' electronic devices and fifty-one forty-one dot twenty-one, which is students' administration of medications. And George, I will let you take this over.
Yeah, okay, so the, the electronic devices one was, was a fun one to actually review. It hasn't been reviewed since, uh, two thousand and six. So, the subtitle of it is use of beepers, paging devices, cellular telephones with or without built-in cameras. And it even goes so far to, uh, put language for governance around walkie-talkies within the policy. So, uh, this one was screaming, uh, update. So, for this one, we use the, the CAE policy around updating technology language. And it, uh, it takes into account both, um, uh, bring your own device, uh, and, uh, district devices. The second policy, uh, fifty-one forty-one twenty-one was around administration of medication. And that, that is, uh, primarily dealt with, um, uh, administration and training for administration of, of epinephrine shots for, for children that are allergic. Uh, and, uh, the updates need to be made to this due to change in state law. Uh, and the nurses all did a great job of getting together, uh, and working on the policy language and, and, uh, really, you know, collaborated well on putting something forward for us to review. So, um, and first review and we'll, we'll vote next time.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for George? Well, I wonder when the last time that the, uh, electronic devices was updated.
Two, ten years ago.
Ten years ago?
Lots changed in ten years.
I guess that's one of those policies that we've just, because you guys have done such a great job of making sure everything is up to date. I guess this is one of those ones that flew under the radar and never got.
When we get to it in ten years from now, we'll.
All right, hearing, um, so we will vote on those two, so please review those. And we will have a vote at our next meeting on the two of these, um, policies. Do I have anything else before we adjourn for the evening?
Just, uh, I have just one other thing. Um, I did contact, uh, reach out to Frank Lito, Town Council Chair, and Mike Manjos, Chair of the Board of Finance, and Donna, um, about going forward with the bond issuance for, uh, the Stepney Roof Project. We had said we were going to wait until after the holidays and then try to get that ball rolling as fast as we could. Um, so, uh, Mr. Lito did respond back to us that he's going to await, uh, Board of Finance action to approve, uh, going forward with that. And then I think we just need to get to bound, bond council, uh, get the, uh, get the proposal written and then we can go to a town meeting. So, hopefully it'll fall into place within the next month.
Yeah.
I was just going to, um, mention something. I, I remembered, I had seen an email. CAE, uh, is having a legislative breakfast as well for Area Six, which is our area here, um, on January seventeenth at Staples High School, um, from seven forty-five to nine thirty. So, I'm going to make it a point to attend if anybody wants to join me.
I'm sorry, what was the date again?
Yeah, can we have the.
January seventeenth, uh, seven forty-five to nine thirty AM, Staples High School. It, it names our town as well under the Area Six towns and cities. So, which is pretty much everybody in our county. Um, so, and it, and it has a link to the registration. Um, they sent it out, um, December twenty-second. So I'll, I'm sure, I think you all got it. If not, I could forward it.
I don't remember getting it. I remember getting one, a CAE one.
Yeah.
I remember getting a CAE one for a breakfast, but it was like in the Hartford area at nine o'clock. And somebody actually, one of the board chairs responded, like, can you actually do something in the evening? For those people who, God bless you, can't work and can't make those. But I don't remember seeing Staples. That, the other one was kind of far away.
Yeah, it doesn't, and this one's good. I, I, I'm hoping that our, our legislators, uh, obviously in our Area Six will, will all attend. So, at least majority. So, yeah, it's great. Um, I'll make it a point to attend before I go into my office.
Great, thank you. Perfect. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, second. All right, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes.
Happy New Year, everybody.